We have a lot to cover today, so at this time I would like to introduce our moderator and our panelist, Dr. Patrick Stiff from the Cardinal Bernadine Cancer Center at Loyola. Dr. Stiff is the Chair of the Foundation's Medical Advisory Board and has been a tremendous partner, advisor, and supporter of the foundation. Dr. Stiff will introduce our experts on our panel. So over to you, Dr. Stiff.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Carrie, and I hope everybody can hear me. It's a it's a real treat to, again, moderate the town hall meeting and we certainly are looking forward to helping clear the air with some of these amazing questions, quite frankly. We have, in addition to myself, Dr. J S Mehta, who's the Ches family professor of myeloma research and professor of medicine at Northwestern University Medical Center. His practice area of intense focus is multiple myeloma, however, he's a true hematologist that is an expert in all sorts of areas of blood cancers, including myodysplastic syndromes, transplantation, leukemias, and lymphomas. Again, his main focus is on multiple myeloma. We have a lot of questions for myeloma, so you will get truly excellent answers to your questions. Next is Sonali Smith. She is the Chief of the Section of Hematology Oncology at University of Chicago and the Elwood Jensen Professor of Medicine, and she focuses mostly in lymphomas, Hodgkin's lymphoma and non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. She has an interest in new agents, which of course is always one of the topics for these town hall meetings, as well as transplantation. And she has really been focusing her career a lot on new agents and new strategies for treatment of patients with relapse refractory Hodgkin's and non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. And finally, Aton Stein, who I don't know if you're from Chicago, but you did a lot of your training in Chicago. He's currently at Memorial Stone Kettering Cancer Center. He is an expert in the treatment of acute and chronic leukemias and myodysplastic syndromes, as well as proliferative disorders such as myelofibrosis and polycythemia vera. And his research focus really is in new and innovative approaches to treating acute myeloid leukemia. Again, one of the hot topics that we're going to be covering today. So again, to my colleagues, thank you for participating in this town hall meeting. And you know, this is another one of these darn Zoom meetings that we all have to suffer through over the last couple of years. And I always try to look for a little glimmer of hope. And if you're from Chicago, you know what I mean by the comment when I say, at least you don't have to show your vaccination card to enter. For those not from Chicago, you have to show your vaccination card to go pretty much anywhere lately. And it's, we don't have trucks here yet, like in Canada, but it caused a lot of problems recently. So I'm going to take the prerogative of asking the first question because this is something that always comes up. And for each of you, you're going to have an opportunity to answer, and we'll just go in order. A lot of times, patients end up with cancers and they don't know where in the heck they got it from. And this is true for blood cancers as well. So I'd like each of you to focus on your areas of expertise for, so Dr. Mehta, myeloma, Dr. Smith, perhaps non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, and Dr. Stein, acute leukemia. What are the risk factors for getting these diseases? Is there anything patients can do to prevent the risk factors? And what are the familial nuances that people should be thinking about or looking looking for? Some of these things are relatively new in the last couple of years. And so let's start with Jash.
So for myeloma and plasma cell disorders, it's known that exposure to large amounts of radiation and possibly to certain chemicals, which are really not in widespread use anymore, and fertilizers and pesticides, may contribute to development of myeloma. But it's fair to say that for the overwhelming majority of patients, there is no cause that can be found. So for patients who are worried that it was something they did or they did not do, the answer is, it's like a lightning strike. There was nothing you did that caused it and nothing that you could have done to prevent it. As far as family involvement is concerned, there is certainly a slightly higher risk than average of a patient with a myeloma or a plasma cell disorder, developing a plasma cell disorder. But it is nowhere near a level that is concerning enough to do any additional screening or anything like that. So it's really all for all practical purposes, a random disease that others in the family do not need to be concerned about.
Hey, Dr. Stiff.
So for non-Hodgkin lymphomas, you know, this is a very large family of cancers. And you know, for any one person, in the vast majority of cases, we don't know what caused it. But we do know some risk factors include, you know, immune suppression. So people who either have autoimmune disease or are being treated with immunosuppressants or have viruses that can knock down the immune system like HIV, there's a higher risk of lymphoma. That can happen for some people. For others, there is an increasing observation that there is a family history where blood cancers may occur within one family. And you know, to Dr. Mehta's point, we don't always know what those risk factors are for families. We do have a lot of cancer risk investigations. So we have people who are trying to understand where there could be a genetic link, but it's really not that well established. And then similar to myeloma, there may be an environmental component where we know that some lymphomas are increased in the farm belt, for example. So there's a thought that certain pesticides or other chemicals may contribute. But you know, I will say that for the most, for the vast majority of patients, we don't always know what caused their specific lymphoma.
And Dr. Stein.
Yeah, so similar to what my colleague said, in most cases of acute myeloid leukemia and myodysplastic syndromes, the the cause of the disease is really unknown and there's nothing you can or cannot do or did that that caused the disease. People who have been in sort of nuclear accidents can sometimes, you know, around Chernobyl or they were in Hiroshima, there's a slight, there's an increased risk of getting acute myeloid leukemia. But but you know, obviously, most of us are not exposed to that. And when it comes to familial causes of acute leukemias or acute myeloid leukemia, you know, again, it's a very, very rare event, but there have been described, and a lot of this work has been done by Lucy Godley of the University of Chicago, Dr. Smith's colleague, who who has shown that there are a number of genetic mutations that occasionally can run in families and lead to an increased rate of the development of acute myeloid leukemia. We tell people that if they've got, you know, a father or a brother or sister or grandparents where everyone in the family has acute leukemia, that's someone who should be evaluated. But otherwise, again, for the vast majority of people, that's not going to be the case.
Okay, um, let's then delve into the questions. And one of the first questions that I'm going to ask each of you again is what is the best way to find doctors and clinics with interests and expertise in your particular cancer diagnosis? J S, you go first again.
I think there are a number of patient advocacy groups. And you know, the L R F is one of them. They are good sources of information. American Cancer Society and so on. There are some other disease-specific advocacy groups that can also provide information. But I think one has to look at, one has to look at convenience, try and get references from people you know. Some online for our Facebook groups and so on. There are people who are active who will give you some guidance in terms of what to do. Do a little research, do a little reading of your own. The key is to be comfortable with whoever it is that you choose. But with complex diseases like the three hematologic malignancies, the broad groups that we are talking about, it's never a bad idea to have someone from a larger academic institution like like the ones that the four of us represent is always worthwhile, despite the inconvenience.
And I would just add, you know, I completely agree, you know, Lymphoma Research Foundation, Leukemia Lymphoma Society, you know, will have some people. The other way to try to figure it out would be to, you know, where are the largest or the most comprehensive cancer centers? And you know, a cancer center is essentially a group of people, you know, who usually at an academic center are dedicated to studying a specific cancer and then trying to improve upon it. And so in general, a lot of experts will go there. And all of our institutions have cancer centers. Some are comprehensive cancer centers, which may have a little bit more of the science there for some of the research. But in terms of, you know, great doctors, you know, these larger centers are really helpful.
And the only, yeah, so the only thing I would add to what to what the others have said is that, you know, everything about COVID is bad, except for maybe one thing, which is that it has increased our use of telemedicine. And it has allowed patients really in far-flung corners of the country to have access to experts in other corners of the country where they may not have had that access before. So for example, where I am in New York City, our institution, because we have so many patients that travel back and forth between New York and Florida, I have actually been required to get a Florida telemedicine license. And now I can see patients in Florida for for second opinions through a video chat. So that may exist at other institutions, and I think it broadens the reach of where one is able to get a second opinion or even a third opinion sometimes.
Well, I guess I agree with everything that's been said. I think to echo what Jash was saying, it never hurts to get a second opinion. I find a lot of times patients who come to academic centers to get a second opinion actually leave with pretty much the same recommendation that that the treatment that they're getting is the right way to go. And the benefits to the patients and the families are enormous there from the psychological standpoint. So you you establish a relationship if the if the cancer were to come back with with an expert at an academic center who may be more in tune with treating more advanced disease or disease that's relapsed. But at the same time, you you also get that knowledge that, hey, my local doctor and all oncologists trained at these academic centers, my local doctor really does know what he's doing. And I don't have to drive from Florida to New York to get care. So I think that there's nothing wrong with getting a second opinion. And if your doctor is upset about you getting a second opinion, I always tell patients, then maybe it's time to get another doctor. Because, you know, we're all happy. We share patients in Chicago all the time. And if somebody wants another opinion, there are sometimes nuances that somebody might know a little bit more about. And it helps patient care and it helps us as well. All right, so let's get into some of the research and new emergency treatment questions. And there's a group of questions that relate to multiple myeloma, including what are the groundbreaking treatments? Is there anything that's currently looking hot, if you will, that's going to be available by FDA approval shortly? And what about CAR T cells for multiple myeloma and some of these newer therapies called bites? So Jash, you're up again.
I think the field of my therapy has moved swiftly and continues to move. As you point out, Darty cells and bispecific T-cell engagers, the biotherapy probably represent two of the most exciting advances at the moment. One CAR T product, BEKMA, has been approved. Unfortunately, availability is a major issue at the moment. The retroviral vector that is required to prepare the CAR T cells is in short supply. And there are only 100 products that are being processed per month in the entire country. And we typically get two to three of those each month. A second product is likely to be licensed in the next couple of months. And the bite, the antibody therapy tries to do a CAR T-like work by activating T cells inside the body to attack the myeloma. Unlike CAR T cells, where you were to take the T cells out, modify them, and then inject them back. So I think things are, things are definitely improving. One is learning to harvest the immune system well. The early results for all of these are very, very exciting. Patients with resistant disease also respond. The problem is that so far, we've been using them in people with such advanced and refractory disease. Disease is that the responses, at least in myeloma, tend to be relatively short lasting. I think as time goes by, we may have to start considering the use of these agents earlier in the course of the disease to try and get the best bang for the buck. These are very expensive to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars. And it would be nice to utilize every time when the patient is in a good shape and the disease is in such a condition that one can maximize the benefit.
Okay, next question. How does iron metabolism factor into follicular lymphoma? Dr. Smith, what are the types of therapies for follicular lymphoma showing promise for cure? That's not a word that we usually use with follicular lymphoma. And what are the potential timeframes for these becoming available? So in other words, can you give a brief update of follicular lymphoma and and then, sorry, iron metabolism?
Yeah, maybe I'll answer the iron metabolism one first because it's a little shorter. And you know, the bottom line is that there is no great connection between iron metabolism and follicular lymphoma. You know, and it kind of leads into, you know, once somebody has follicular lymphoma, you know, what are any of the diet or environmental factors that might influence follicular lymphoma? You know, like what its path might be. And the only thing that's really come up is that there are suggestions that vitamin D deficiency, you know, is associated with, you know, follicular lymphoma, maybe having a little bit more of a of an aggressive behavior. And that's being tested right now in a in a clinical trial to see if vitamin D replacement can help. But other than that, there's really no strong data about diet and other sort of vitamins or supplements that influence follicular lymphoma behavior. When it comes to follicular lymphoma, this is the second most common type of non-Hodgkin lymphoma we see. It is something that is generally slow growing in the vast majority of people. It will, you know, wax and wane over a person's lifetime. And at some point, they will need treatment to beat it down. And in most people, it can be sort of a chronic disease. In a small percent of patients, this can have a more angry course and often need, you know, more aggressive chemotherapy or transplant or even CAR T cell therapy. And unfortunately, we don't have those kinds of tools where when we first meet somebody, we know which one of those two paths they might go down. I do hesitate to use the word cure with follicular lymphoma. This is something we can treat, but it is very difficult to completely eliminate. That being said, I think as some new tools come along, I don't want to take cure as the goal off the table, but I don't think we're there right now.
And what about new, what are the newest therapies for follicular lymphoma, in your opinion?
Yeah, well, I think for follicular lymphoma, it's been a very busy several years. And I would put the drugs or the the treatment approaches into three categories that are new. One is CAR T cell therapy. So we already heard about this from Dr. Mehta. But CAR T cell therapy takes a person's own T cells and engineers them to identify and find the lymphoma cells, or at least a protein on the lymphoma cells called CD19. And then those T cells grow and attack and kill the lymphoma. And this was approved for use in people with follicular lymphoma recently. And although we're still trying to figure out exactly who is the best person to benefit from this, it's very clear that some patients who get CAR T cell therapy can have their disease go into remission and be controlled for a very long period of time, even when other approaches have not worked. So that's one new therapy. Another new therapy is that there are some what we call targeted agents out there. So these are generally pills that are geared towards either mutations that are in the follicular lymphoma. So tazemetostat was approved for use in follicular lymphoma and is a and will attack a specific pathway. And then there are other drugs such as lenolithomide, also called revlimid, which is very active in follicular lymphoma, and PI3 kinase inhibitors, which block another pathway. And one example there would be umbrelisib. So these are all targeted agents that I think are exciting. What's not yet approved, but I think is going to happen sometime soon, is going to be the bispecific antibodies. So as Dr. Mehta already explained, this is an antibody similar to rituximab in that it, you know, binds to a protein on the lymphoma cells. But in this case, brings in T cells. So it binds to two different proteins on two different cells. And the goal is to activate the T cells to attack the lymphoma. So not yet approved, but there's a couple of bispecific antibodies that I think are are going to be available very soon, or at least I hope.
Okay, I'll leave you by the side. Dr. Stein, there was a couple of questions on C M M L or chronic myelomycotic leukemia. The question, I understand C M M L normally progresses to A M L, is this correct? And what are the conditions might C M M L lead to? What are the prognostic scoring tools that are used to determine prognosis in this disease? And are there any new targeted therapies in the pipeline for this disease? I guess maybe how would you treat it? And then how would you treat it if it comes back?
Sure. So so C M M L, for those of you who don't know, is a disease called chronic myelomycotic leukemia. Sometimes people, even insurance companies confuse it with C M L, chronic myeloid leukemia, which is a completely different disease. So here we're talking about C M M L. And C M M L is an interesting disease because it has features of a myodysplastic syndrome where the the cells in the bone marrow, the baby blood cells in the bone marrow are abnormally created and and what are called dysplastic, meaning they don't look normal and they can't produce normal blood cells for a patient's body. But it also has features of a myoproliferative neoplasm, meaning that you get too many of a kind of white blood cell called a monocyte. And like all of these diseases, there are sort of different levels of C M M L. We grade it from C M M L zero, which is sort of the earliest form of the disease, to C M M L two, which is a more advanced form of the disease. And as you go from C M M L zero to C M M L two, you have an increased risk of the disease turning into acute myeloid leukemia. Pretty much that's the only disease or that the the end pathway for this disease is that over enough time, and if you're at high enough risk, the the disease can develop into acute myeloid leukemia. So the question about the risk factors and the scoring systems, you know, they're they're you, they're sort of complicated, but they basically fall into into three different categories. They look at the number of what are called blasts in the bone marrow. So those are the immature blood cells. If a patient has an increased number of immature blasts in the bone marrow, that is a negative prognostic sign. If patients have certain chromosome rearrangements or genetic mutations that are adverse risk, that's another negative prognostic sign. And the third negative prognostic sign is how cytokine efficient it is, meaning how low are your blood counts? So if your blood counts are normal and you have C M M L, that's good. If your blood counts are very, very low and you're requiring transfusions, that's that's not great. The treatments for C M M L really overlap with the treatments that we give for acute myeloid leukemia and the treatments that we give for myodysplastic syndrome. The most common treatment is a class of drugs called hypomethylating agents. But I think a lot of the research that's being done now is trying to add on targeted therapies to the hypomethylating agents to improve the outcome. So patients with C M M L will have a variety of different mutations. And we have a number of treatments that are in development or some even approved that can be used to target those genetic mutations. And the thought is that if you combine the targeted therapies with the already approved hypomethylating agents, you can get better outcomes and and disease control. But finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about transplant. So at the end of the day, probably the only way to permanently cure C M M L is with what's called an allogeneic stem cell transplant. An allogeneic stem cell transplant, when it works, fundamentally gets rid of the diseased bone marrow cells that are causing the C M M L. And that is is probably what a patient will need ultimately to permanently be rid of their disease.
Certainly, there are patients who may do well for many, many years with C M M L who don't have the prognostic factors that you talked about. And so it's it's not inevitable that patients are going to transform to acute leukemia, right?
Correct.
And need something like a transplant. There are some new agents, one of them that's going to be done in the cooperative group, in the National Cooperative Group, the N C I sponsored cooperative groups, is a drug called TIM3, which is a new immune stimulant that may have specific activity in C M M L in a very preliminary study. So for those with this disease, keep your eye on the ball. And again, our strategy is if you have to get a hypomethylating agent because of bad prognosis, then you probably need a transplant in short order. So Jash, I'm going to ask you next about revlimid. One question came through, what percentage of patients receiving revlimid develop other cancers? In other words, is this a risk factor for for getting a second cancer? Or was that overblown? Because I know early data suggested that some patients were getting acute leukemia.
I think revlimid, that entire class of drugs, revlimid, pamalidomide and thalidomide, they do increase the risk of second malignancies. Most of them tend to be hematologic malignancies, myodysplastic syndrome and leukemia, but some other cancers as well. I would say that it probably doubles the risk compared to the baseline risk that patients with myeloma have. So if you assume that the baseline risk is over a period of 10 years is somewhere in the 5% range, this is closer to 10%. If you consider 4%, then it's closer to eight or nine percent. But the key is the drug does make a profound impact on response and survival. So despite the slightly higher absolute risk of developing a malignancy, which is going to be 5%, 5% baseline, 5% more, the it's not a good enough reason to curtail or not use the drug because it improves survival. I think the key is to watch patients who are receiving these class of drugs very closely for development of another malignancy.
What would you be looking for in such a patient?
I think one would make sure that they have proper health screens for second malignancies, you know, skin checks. And of course, one keeps a close watch on blood counts. One of the problems with revlimid is that it can lower the blood counts. And one of the manifestations of myodysplastic syndrome is low blood counts. So if one sees low blood counts in a patient with revlimid, that do not correct easily after adjusting the dose or holding the drug for a period of time, then it would be worthwhile looking for for MDS. We see a number of patients where the attribution of the low counts is to revlimid. Revlimid also causes the red cells to become larger. That's a condition called macrocytosis, which can also be seen in in MDS. So then it's important to keep a watch for that and do a bone marrow examination.
Perhaps even a more difficult question to answer is, how long should somebody receive revlimid as maintenance therapy after an autotransplant for multiple myeloma?
I think this is a great question. And the data that we have at the moment suggests that the drug should be continued indefinitely. And I remember seeing the list of questions, and a lot of questions are to do with the length of maintenance therapy in myeloma. Because myeloma is not a curable disease, but it can be kept controlled. One can keep the genie in the bottle, if you will. It is important to continue maintenance therapy. And what we tend to do is do maintenance therapy in a manner that allows the patient to live their life normally. If there are significant side effects, then we make adjustments. And if those adjustments don't work, eventually we end up potentially stopping the maintenance therapy. It's not that giving maintenance therapy guarantees lack of relapse. It is going to relapse and not giving maintenance therapy does not guarantee that it is going to come back very fast. But it does help. And it's worth doing as long as it is possible to do it with acceptable quality of life. I have patients who have been on revlimid for 12 and 13 years. And I have patients on bortezomib or well care who have been on maintenance therapy with the drug since, I think, about 2005 continuously. So as long as you keep a watch out for side effects and quality of life, it's not a problem.
Can I ask a question? What about the concept of minimal residual disease on maintenance? You know, this is, there may be a question there, Pat, on this as well, but I'll ask Jash. You know, in myeloma, you know, are there studies that can help guide when treatment should be stopped?
It's a fabulous question, and it is not there in the list. I'm glad you asked. So minimal residual disease in myeloma has been It's a fabulous question, and it is not there in the list. I'm glad you asked. So minimal residual disease in myeloma has been shown to influence prognosis in a manner that is completely logical. For any of the diseases we treat, a patient who has disease is always going to do worse than a patient who does not have the disease, all else being equal. And if you go down to what is called a complete remission, an MRD positive complete remission where there is a little bit of minimal residual disease, it's always going to fare slightly worse off than somebody who is MRD negative and is in complete remission. But does that mean that you can stop maintenance therapy? Those data do not exist. And such studies have not been done yet. And that really is the key to minimal residual disease investigation, certainly in solid tumors where MRD negativity is in some diseases very strongly correlated with the disease not coming back at all. We don't have those data in myeloma. We certainly do not stop maintenance therapy if the MRD becomes negative.
Well, there's a national study ongoing, SWAG 1803, that some of you may be familiar with. And this is a randomized maintenance trial of Revlimid versus Revlimid and a second drug called jaratumab, which is an antibody against one of the components on the myeloma cells, CD38. And this is a randomized trial where half the patients get Revlimid, half the patients get the combination. And at two years, patients undergo a bone marrow, and if they are MRD negative, they will be randomized between stopping the therapy and continuing the therapy. So as J S mentioned, we don't have the answers, but we hope to get the answers. And this is trial that took many years to get going. And I think many of us felt like J S does that we should continue it indefinitely. But the National Cancer Institute said, hey, wait a second. You know, these drugs are extremely expensive, as some of our questions allude to, and we'll get to those. But so why why would we not have a trial where we considered stopping this at least to test whether or not there's going to be an advantage just for economic reasons alone? So that that is ongoing. And and anybody who's completed an autotransplant is eligible for this study, and it's open at many, many of our centers. So next, let's go back to lymphoma. Forty years ago, I studied chemo drugs in CHOP. I think that's how long we've been studying it, or some of us. What new drugs have been developed for diffuse large B-cell lymphomas? Sony, and how would you go about treating a newly diagnosed patient today still with CHOP?
Yeah, so really, really great question. I would say that at least in the last, you know, CHOP was the standard of care since 1976. That was when it was first published. And it didn't really get beat until 2002, when rituximab first came around. So we then went through a lull where, you know, we just didn't have a whole lot of drugs that made a big impact. And now, all of a sudden, in the last five years or so, we have a tremendous number of new FDA-approved options. And, you know, I would just say, kind of working backwards, for people who have had diffuse large B-cell lymphoma come back a number of times, we have CAR T cell therapy. And for people who are not able to go through CAR T cell therapy, we have other agents and regimens that are approved, such as tafocinumab, lenalitamide, loncostuximab, tesarine, selinexor, and polytuzumab plus BR. So these are all targeted agents in one way or another. You know, often without chemotherapy. And, you know, these are really making a difference in terms of options for people when the disease has come back a number of times. What's kind of new at ASH this year, so ASH is our National Meeting for Blood Cancers and Blood Disorders, that was in December. We heard data about a new antibody called polytuzumab. So this is an antibody-drug conjugate. So it's like a Trojan horse. It goes in, it finds its target, and then it releases a little bit of chemotherapy directly in the area where the tumor is, where the lymphoma cells are. So we saw that polytuzumab with our CHOP improves something called progression-free survival for people with diffuse large B-cell lymphoma by about five to six percent. So if you ask what's new in the in the relapse setting, we have a ton of options in the frontline setting. I think it's still our CHOP until we see whether or not polytuzumab gets FDA-approved. And then if and when it does, that may become a new standard of care.
Okay, so we'll maybe get back to some of the newer drugs for for relapse later. Next, just I'm going to put you on the spot here. There's a question about menin inhibitors for MLL-associated acute lymphoid leukemia or mixed lineage leukemia with a KMT2A mutation. The question is, there's there's one compound being tested currently, the syndax molecule. Actually, there's a second one. How soon could this be FDA-approved? I hope you have your crystal ball. And what therapy should be given before, with, or after CAR T therapy for ALL, including menin inhibitors? Or how would you see this ultimately being used in patients with mixed lineage leukemia?
Sure. So so just to back up for a second, for those who don't know, there's a subset of patients with acute myeloid leukemia and acute lymphoblastic leukemia who have chromosomal rearrangements involving chromosome 11. And those are called MLL rearrangements, or the other name is KMT2A rearrangements. There is a protein called menin that is thought to be intricately involved in the development of these kinds of leukemias with these with this particular chromosome rearrangement. And there's data that actually we presented at ASH, the meeting that Dr. Smith was just mentioning, showing that in patients with relapsed and refractory acute lymphoblastic and acute myeloid leukemia with these MLL rearrangements, the response rate is about 55%. What's really exciting, maybe more than the response, I mean, that's really exciting, but what's really, really exciting is that of those responses, 92% of them were MRD negative, so had no minimal residual disease. So there are a lot of drug companies that are that are trying to get menin inhibitors approved. I'm aware of four other menin inhibitors in clinical trials for patients with AML and ALL. The syndax drug is the one that's farthest along. I really think that these drugs are going to get approved within the next couple of years. I don't know if it'll be a full approval. It will likely be an accelerated approval first. But these drugs are very, very effective. And I think they're going to really have a place in our arsenal of treatments for patients with at least this subtype of of acute leukemia. So then the question is, well, then what do you do after it gets approved for relapsed and refractory disease? And what we then want to do is take these drugs and we want to move them up into earlier lines of therapy because you want to give your best treatments at the very beginning, or that's what I think you need to do. And likely, we'll be giving these drugs in combination with our standard of care induction chemotherapies or other or other therapies. Now, when it comes to CAR T cells, you know, there's a there's a split between what we have for acute lymphoblastic leukemia and acute myeloid leukemia. So in acute lymphoblastic leukemia, CAR T cells are approved. And in a patient with an MLL rearrangement, you can imagine that a patient might get CAR T cells as a therapy to put their disease into remission, and then maybe get a menin inhibitor as maintenance therapy afterwards, or maybe you can do things in in the opposite direction also. For acute myeloid leukemia, we don't really have CAR T cells that are are effective yet, and that's for a variety of reasons. So the use of menin inhibitors, I think, will happen in AML, but but whether CAR T cells happen in AML is a much more, it's a little bit more unclear at this point.
Okay, next, some questions about chronic lymphoid leukemia. First of all, I am at stage zero, and while I'd like to know what CLL is doing to my body, are there any long-term consequences to this? I have terrible leg pains and no doctor knows what it's coming from. Can I just watch and wait for years with CLL? I'll throw that open to whoever wants to to give a shout out.
Sure, I can start. I mean, for CLL, you know, this this is actually a blood cancer that has two names, chronic lymphocytic leukemia or small lymphocytic lymphoma. If it's mostly in the blood, we call it leukemia. If it's mostly in the lymph nodes, we call it lymphoma, but they are the same exact disease. This is a very slow-growing leukemia that, you know, can often take years before it actually needs treatment. And, you know, similar to other slow-growing lymphomas, we know that treating somebody before they need treatment does not help them live longer or live better. And so it's really in the person's best interest to try to watch it for as long as as we can. There are maybe some high-risk subsets. So in other words, when we have somebody with CLL, sometimes we will do chromosome analysis, something called FISH or other mutation studies. And there is a clinical trial that was done through the cooperative group to see if treating some people with high risk earlier actually makes a difference. But overall, the, you know, there's really no advantage to treating somebody before they need treatment. In terms of what it's doing to a person's body at a at a RISE stage zero is probably very little. It's, you know, this essentially means that they see some cells in the blood, but it hasn't filled up any of the lymph nodes yet, and all of the other blood counts are still normal. So it is unlikely to be the cause of pain in the legs. Now, there are some people where CLL as a as a B-cell, it can make an antibody that is an autoantibody, so it can attack, you know, some normal parts of the body, either red cells or platelets. So sometimes you can have autoimmune diseases that go along with it. But I I think in general, a RISE stage zero is unlikely to be the cause of the symptoms. Just one last thing I'll say about CLL, though, is that right now with the pandemic that's ongoing, there is data that people who have CLL, regardless of whether or not they're on treatment, may not have as good of a response to some of the vaccines. And so this is something to talk about with your with your doctor.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Mehta, what are the prognostic factors that you use in determining therapy, initial therapy for a patient with multiple myeloma?
The differences in prognostic factors make limited difference in choice of initial therapy. I think they affect prognosis much more and subsequent steps of therapy, including some really more intense treatments more. But to just talk about prognostic factors, I would say that the most important prognostic factor is the genetic abnormalities within the malignant cells, within the myeloma cells themselves, what we call cytogenetics and FISH. A newer technique called next generation sequencing gives sometimes more information. And then there are other things like the platelet count and blood tests called LDH, beta-two microglobulin albumin, many, many conventional prognostic factors. But really, it is the genetic and the molecular nature of the cells that is the overwhelmingly important determinant of prognosis in myeloma.
And what are the bad ones?
So deletion or missing chromosome 17 in part or completely is perhaps the most important one. On that particular chromosome is located a gene that helps the body control malignancies. And if that is lost, malignancies tend to misbehave. That's a prognostic factor that's common. That particular genetic abnormality is common to multiple cancers. And then there is another one called plus one Q, where there's a part of chromosome one that is extra, one P minus, where there's a part of chromosome one that can be missing, then translocation or a mashup between chromosomes four and 14, 14 and 16, 14 and 20, 16 and 20. Many more extra chromosomes, missing chromosomes. These are these are the important prognostic factors. Endos.
There's a question about life expectancy in AML, and I'll I'll try to rephrase it a little bit. Dr. Stein, you have a patient who's gotten chemotherapy and is doing well, is in remission. What are the chances of being cured if they're in remission, six months, a year, two years, five years? Give us kind of kind of a gestalt of that. And this could be potentially two parts, one with transplant and one without transplant.
Okay, so the general rule is that the longer you're in remission, the better it is, however you got there. So if you're in remission two years, it's better than being in it. You're more likely to stay in remission than if you were in remission six months. So your chances of remaining in remission increase the longer you're in remission. However, you got to that remission, whether it was with a transplant or without a transplant. You know, we typically offer stem cell transplants for those patients who have a higher risk of relapse. So those patients with unfavorable and intermediate risk disease. And in that setting, if you've had a transplant, your chances of relapse are likely going to be lower than if you did not have a transplant. But every person's individual situation is slightly different. So that is a very, very broad rule, but but certainly cannot be applied to everybody. I'll just mention one retrospective trial that was presented at the ASH meeting a number of years ago, showing that for patients who remained in remission for three or more years, their chances of relapse were very, very low. In fact, the chances of relapse after a year, after the third year of remission were about the same as the chances of relapse after the fifth year of remission. So if you get to three years without relapsing, your chances of relapse are very, very low. If you get to five years, they're extremely low. The number of patients who relapse after five years is is you know, extraordinarily low. And and I think most people are in the clear at that point.
Great. That's a great answer. Thank you. Dr. Smith, as somebody who's seen and treated a lot of patients, we get a lot of questions always every year about the cost of drugs. So I'm going to address this one to you and then see if anybody else wants to add anything. Why are blood cancer therapies so prohibitively expensive? Given expense, are fixed term therapies such as venetoclax or binatuzumab an effective long-term choice for patients with CLL that has not been previously treated? What are the symptoms and genetic characteristics that would cause you to recommend a different treatment? Rather than venetoclax or binatuzumab for CLL newly diagnosed?
So those are some really important questions. You know, just speaking of drug costs in general, I don't think it's limited to blood cancer. In fact, some of the immunotherapy drugs that are used for what we call solid cancers, like lung cancer, melanoma, et cetera, you know, are are billions of dollars in terms of cost and revenue for, you know, some of the companies that make them. So things are very expensive all around and not just limited to blood cancer. And why it's that high, I think, is a really good question. There are many groups that are advocating to curb cancer drug costs. There's also people who are investigating how to repurpose old drugs, if you will. You know, drugs that may be generic or, you know, fallen, you know, weren't developed in quite the same way. And maybe there's an advantage there both based on how effective they are, and maybe they will be cheaper. So I think those are some important sort of themes in all of cancer. When it comes to CLL, you know, the person who's asking the question is correct. When somebody is first diagnosed, we have several options for how to treat them. Some options are what we call time limited, meaning that, you know, there's a fixed duration of time for treatment. So one of those is bendamustine and rituximab. Another is venetoclax and obinatuzumab. And there's also some newer combinations that are being developed that are either 12 months or 18 months. In contrast, there's also some options where once people start that treatment, they stay on it until it stops working. So something like starting with a Brutinib and taking that until it no longer works, or a Calabrutinib. So why would we pick, you know, the the more expensive, longer duration one over venetoclax or binatuzumab? You know, I I think that's a really personal decision. There are times when people don't want the infusion. So binatuzumab is an IV medication that has some, you know, infusion reactions. So sometimes people don't want something IV. The other challenge is that sometimes with the obinatuzumab and venetoclax, you're more likely to get something called tumor lysis syndrome, which is where the cells die so quickly, they can release things into the blood that can be hard on the kidneys. So, you know, these are all, the the best part about this is that we have options. And there are pros and cons to all of it. So I I think that's probably the way that I would just say is that talk to your doctor about what's best for you. I do tend to go towards the limited duration in general, because I I think being done and off of it is is great, but it's not for everybody.
And again, to my theme of clinical trials, there's a national trials that have just been completed for patients of all ages with CLL, looking at some of these questions. Unfortunately, and fortunately. Unfortunately, and fortunately, we won't have the answers for a few years. Fortunately, because patients do very well and we're looking for survival, of course. And unfortunately, because we won't have the answers. So I agree, talk to your docs. The venetoclax and binatuzumab is relatively new and we need a little bit more time to see what's happening with those patients beyond two and three years. But certainly a therapy that may be of value. I guess I'm old enough to also consider fludarabine-based combinations, which for six months and then stop in certain patient groups, subgroups of patients with CLL, have actually done well for 10 to 20 years with that six-month treatment. So so let's let's continue the theme a little bit about cost. It says, why are patient savings programs for drugs like a Brutinib and a Calabrutinib only available for people with commercial health insurance and not for Medicare patients? This is a question that we get all the time and I'll let anybody grab that.
So, you know, our government and its wisdom, Medicare dictates that the patient's portion of the payment and the government's portion of the payment has to be treated the same way. So if a company is willing to provide assistance to the patient for their share of the payment, they have to provide the same assistance to the government as well. So if a company wants to write off the copay for iblutinib or REVLIMID, they have to write off the entire cost for the government. I mean, they know that's that's the reality, the the way they operate. Whereas with commercial insurance, such a prohibition does not exist and therefore assistance can be provided. So the paradox here is that people who are in most need of assistance, our senior citizens and people on Medicare, do not get the assistance. And those who perhaps could do with limited assistance sometimes have a $0 copay. It's it's a bizarre paradox, but there we are.
But what what has also happened is that the there's a workaround now. And the workaround is that the patients with Medicare can get on to several of these foundation and get grants funded by the drug company. So a drug company that makes one of these expensive drugs sets up a foundation or gives money to a foundation, which then is able to give funds for copays and help pay for the drugs for patients with Medicare and Medicaid. So make sure that you explore all these options, go onto the websites of the drugs and talk to your pharmacist or your center's pharmacy team, and they may be able to to help you a bit. Next, let's go back a little bit to CAR Ts. And one of the questions is, what about CAR Ts for acute myeloid leukemia? Just time.
Yeah, so so the big issue with CAR Ts for myeloid diseases is that the targets for the CAR T cells are not so great. So if you if you look at a disease like acute lymphoblastic leukemia, where the target for the CAR Ts is CD19, what what we've learned is that you can actually eradicate CD19 B cells in a patient without too much trouble to that patient down the road. The thing is that all of the targets that exist for AML exist on normal infection fighting cells as well and normal blood cells as well. And therefore, when you when you give CAR T cells using those targets in AML, you kind of eradicate people's ability to produce any blood at all, any red blood cells, any platelets, any neutrophils. So most of the CAR T cell trials that have been used in AML and MDS, for that matter, or high-grade MDS, require you to have a stem cell transplant immediately after you get the CAR T cell therapy. There are some new strategies and some new CAR T cell products that are being worked on, but those are really in their infancy. And when patients say to me, you know, because CAR T cells are all over the news and all over, you know, everything, you know, because they're for myeloma and lymphoma. So people hear about them. But when patients say to me, well, what about giving me CAR T cells for my AML? I say, unfortunately, it's just not not prime time yet for that. And and we're we're we look at other therapies first.
Well, let's let's continue along this vein and and finish. There was a question about CAR T treatment for T cell ALL in children, probably adults as well. Both of us get the the disease, T cell disease.
Yeah, I guess I have to answer that one. So so I there are efforts to create CAR T cells for T cell lymphoblastic leukemia. Again, that's an effort that's really in its infancy, but there are clinical trials, I believe, have just started looking at that. It's interesting, you know, T cell leukemia is or acute T cell leukemia is actually pretty uncommon. And those patients actually do okay with with our currently available therapies, not as well as we want them to do, but but they do okay. So yes, there are efforts to to use CAR T cells in T cell disease.
So it's a question for each of you. There's a few questions on standard immunotherapy. And let's let's since we talked about CAR Ts, let's not get into that. But the Dr. Smith mentioned drugs that are being used every day for lung cancer, nevolumab, pembrolizumab. Why don't we hear a lot of these commercials, I guess, for Pembro in multiple myeloma and nevolumab for Hodgkin's disease? There is some data, of course, with that. Can you can each of you then go over your diseases and and talk about the standard immunotherapy with PD1 blockers? Yes, you want to start?
So the data for PD1 inhibitors, that particular specific type of immunotherapy simply do not exist in myeloma. Clinical trials have been done and for whatever reason, some of the trials have actually shown adverse outcomes because of increased toxicity. I have a feeling that those are things that can be taken care of with appropriate supportive therapy. But we, because of that and because of lack of efficacy, we really do not use this class of drugs, except in very limited circumstances. And those two situations are patients who have had an allergenic stem cell transplant for myeloma and have relapsed, where it is felt that stimulating the immune system of the donor may help. And in some cases of myeloma patients who have been treated with CAR T cells off-study using a product called ABECMA, we have tried to use this class of agents or a myeloma-specific immunotherapy drug called elo2zumab to try and stimulate the immune system to harness the power of the T cells more.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to say, so for, you know, lymphomas and Hodgkin's, you know, that we have to remember that these drugs, pembrolizumab, nevalumab, ipilumumab, they all are targeted antibodies and they are against targets that are important in, and it differs depending on which cancer you're talking about. So out of the lymphomas and the Hodgkin and Hodgkin lymphomas, Hodgkin's is where we have the strongest evidence that PD L1 overexpression. So in other words, that these cancer cells take advantage of this pathway to survive and breaking that checkpoint, if you will, with pembrolizumab or nevalumab actually makes sense and in fact is incredibly active and is now being tested even in people who are newly diagnosed, along with chemotherapy. Out of the non-Hodgkin lymphomas, there's very few that actually have, you know, reliance on this this pathway, this checkpoint with PD L1 or PD1. And it's primary media stinal B cell lymphoma. And, you know, maybe there's a couple more, but not very many. So the the studies have been done and these agents just don't work very well. So that's the lack of advertising.
And then for myeloid diseases like MDS and and AML, there've also been studies done with PD1 and PD L1 inhibitors, which have been disappointing and and haven't worked well at all. There is a checkpoint, though, that's very interesting, which has gotten a lot of attention. And that is a macrophage activator by targeting CD47. So there's a drug called magrolimab that in myeloid diseases, when combined with azacitidine or discytabine, actually primarily azacitidine in this case, seems to be very active and maybe particularly in a in a specific subtype of AML and MDS that has a mutation in a gene called P53. So I I we haven't completely given up on on some sort of immunotherapy for checkpoint inhibitors. But but the checkpoints that are targeted by Pembro and Nivo are probably not the right ones in in myeloid malignancies.
I muted myself for a second. Yes, there's a coming up some national trials on magrolimab in in patients with elderly AML that patients might be interested in finding out about. Those are going to be opening relatively soon. It's a very exciting time for for patients with diseases eligible to be treated for this drug. And there are multiple companies working on this this antibody as well. Dr. Smith, what are the latest treatments for mantle cell lymphoma? And what are the prognostic factors that you use to consider in treating a patient for this disease?
Yeah, so mantle cell lymphoma is not a very common type of lymphoma, only, you know, maybe 3,000 to 4,000 new cases per year. And the historical approach there has been to give intensive chemotherapy, get people into remission and then do an autotransplant. And I would say there's maybe a couple of themes of new treatments for mantle cell lymphoma. The first is, what is the best way to get people into remission upfront? And can we use some of the targeted agents like BTK inhibitors to get people into remission? And so there's a number of trials that are looking at combinations of either chemotherapy with or without BTK inhibitors, including an intergroup study that is ongoing that Dr. Stiff is a part of as well. The the second question is, does everybody really need a transplant, you know, if they go into remission? So here's where we're using that minimal residual disease study to, you know, have a computer sort of decide whether or not somebody gets a transplant. Because I I do think it's important that not everybody needs or will benefit from it. And so that's what that trial is trying to do. Once the lymphomas come back multiple times, the probably the two approaches that have had the most success in the last several years, one is the availability of not just BTK inhibitors, like a Brutinib and a Calabrutinib and Xanabrutinib, but also venetoclax, which is a BCL2 inhibitor. So there are some studies that when mantle cell lymphoma comes back, this can be a very helpful drug. But the piece that I think is going to maybe be of the most interest is going to be CAR T cell therapy, which is now FDA-approved for mantle cell lymphoma when it comes back. So lots of new treatments that are out there and bispecific antibodies are also being tested. When it comes to prognostic factors, probably the two most important prognostic factors, one is whether or not there's a mutation of P53. So that's, you know, the same thing that Dr. Stein was alluding to. When P53 is mutated or deleted, sometimes these lymphomas can be very, very aggressive and not respond to chemotherapy. So that's one prognostic factor. The second is how fast the lymphoma is growing, so something called proliferation. And there's different ways to measure this, but I would say that those are the two risk factors that I look at. And then finally, just it really depends on the person. Mantle cell lymphoma, the average age is 70. So not everybody's going to be a candidate for aggressive treatment, especially if they're, you know, having lots of other medical conditions. So again, something that has to be personalized, but many new treatments along the way.
Hey, um, some relatively specific questions. I have essential thrombocytemia. I did not tolerate hydroxyurea. I'm on Jackafe now and have severe anemia five years later. I'm getting blood transfusions and iron and procreate therapy. Please help.
Okay, a plea for help, which is not, which is always, you know, hard to hear. You know, I again, without knowing the very specifics of of this particular case, I'll just make some general comments. So when someone is becoming particularly cytopenic after or having low blood counts after a diagnosis of essential thrombocytosis, if it hasn't been done, it is important to repeat a bone marrow aspiration and biopsy because in in certain cases, that essential thrombocytosis can change into a disease where the bone marrow gets scarred over, called myelofibrosis, and the and the blood counts can drop. So really, the first thing to do is to really be sure that that isn't happening because the the treatment for that and how we think about that changes things. If it's really still a central thrombocytosis, there are a variety of other treatments that could be considered. People across the street from me at Cornell use a lot of interferon treatment, which actually works pretty well if you can tolerate it. So those would be options, but I would I would recommend, you know, talking to your doctor about it. And if you don't like what your doctor's saying, maybe get a second opinion with someone else.
Okay, in the same vein, in a myeloproliferative patient, I was on Bydays after diagnosis and achieved remission. New doctor suggested a break from treatment after 26 cycles of Bydays after four months. He suggested Jackafe 20 milligrams twice a day. I am Jack two positive and IDH one positive. I'm worried that my MDS might come back just on Jackafe. How would you approach a patient like this? Obviously, this is a very, very specific and you really can't give us a 100% effective answer. So how would you approach such a patient?
Yeah, so so it gets to the point of that when someone is having such a good response to a hypomethylating agent like Bydays and has been on it for, it sounds like, over two years, is there a time that you can stop? And and the unfortunate answer is, we just don't know. The standard of care is just to continue with the Bydays treatment indefinitely if a patient is is tolerating it. There are certain specific situations where a doctor might want to stop and give a patient a break and then think about restarting if the disease gets worse again. I think the 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 questioner raises the 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 more broad question of what is the role of targeted therapy in patients with myeloproliferative neoplasms or myelodysplastic syndrome or overlap syndromes? There are clinical trials, I'll just say there are clinical trials that are investigating the use of the combination of Jack two inhibitors like ruxolitinib with IDH inhibitors. There's an IDH one inhibitor that's commercially available. Because what we've noticed is that if you use only one of the drugs, you don't get, you don't get as much success as you might think you would. And that the thought is that you might need to use both drugs together. So I would encourage the questioner, number one, to talk to their doctor about it. But number two, to ask their doctor about clinical trials that might combine a Jack inhibitor with an IDH inhibitor.
Hey, uh, next, let's turn to CML, a disease we really haven't talked about just yet. I'm on SpryCell for CML. I was able to get in a major molecular remission within six months undetectable. And maybe a candidate to go off SpryCell after two years. What are the considerations in evaluating whether to continue SpryCell for life or go off go off after two years in remission and treatment? What is the prognosis of CML in remission and what is on the horizon for CML patients? And then I'm mostly a vegetarian, healthy eater. Is there a particular diet to follow?
Okay, I'll I'll start at the end and go to the beginning. So there is no particular diet that one needs to follow that will affect CML. There may be other reasons to be a vegetarian or not be a vegetarian, but but note, I am not aware of data that shows that any particular diet is really gonna gonna help or hurt. So in terms of of the the SpryCell and whether one can go off it, you know, there's now very, very good data that if someone is in a complete molecular remission, so not a major molecular remission, but a complete molecular remission, meaning that there is no evidence of the BCR-able transcript, there's no evidence of CML in the patient's blood. And if patients remain in a complete molecular remission for two years and then you stop the SpryCell, that about 50% of those patients will never need SpryCell again. So they are functionally cured. Now, 50% of those patients will relapse. But the good news is that of the patients who relapse, nearly universally, if you restart the tyrosine kinase inhibitor like SpryCell, those patients will get back into a very, very deep remission. So it it really comes down to a question of how anxious you are about stopping. Some patients say there's, I don't even want to risk it. You know, I'm doing well on my SpryCell, why should I risk it? I'll feel I feel fine. And then I say, okay, continue the SpryCell. And some patients, especially younger patients, say, I don't want to be on this. It's it's treatment for cancer. I don't want to be on treatment for cancer for the rest of my life. And in those patients, if they meet met the criteria of a complete molecular remission for two years, then I do offer them the chance of treatment discontinuation. then I do offer them the chance of treatment discontinuation. The last comment I'll make is that, you know, these drugs are extraordinarily effective. They have now been given for many, many, many years and are very, very safe. And the life expectancy on these drugs is similar to the life expectancy of someone in the general population without CML. So either way you go, you're going to make an okay decision. And I would, you know, just chat about it with your doctor.
I wholeheartedly agree as there's certainly no major downside to a trial of coming off after two years. And I have to say that many of the patients that have come off and done well are really think that you're a great doctor. So it is a, it is a good feeling both for you as a physician and the patients. And when they, and if it's somebody who does have a relapse, they go back on and you follow them carefully back on. And as, as you mentioned, they go into a deep remission again. So we follow these patients very carefully so that we're not just saying, okay, stop and we'll see you in six months. You're followed very carefully and we monitor things. As soon as we detect the emergence of the clone again, we'll put you back on. You won't have any symptoms. Dr. Metta, I am in complete remission for seven to eight months with multiple myeloma and I haven't had a transplant. What are the risks that I have not going through a transplant?
I don't think there are any data that suggest that transplant is more or less beneficial based upon the level of response an individual has achieved. I, I think the general statement which is accurate is that when you do a stem cell transplant in a patient with myeloma, you deepen or upgrade the level of the response, you keep the response sustained for a longer period of time. And you benefit in terms of survival. So unlike some malignancies which can be cured, where you can choose one pathway to cure versus another pathway to cure for a disease like myeloma, which is probably not cured. If you decide to forego a treatment option completely, you are going to sacrifice an element of disease control and survival, which I do not believe can be recaptured with any other alternative. Because the same set of alternatives is available to people who have a transplant and people who do not have a transplant. So if this individual chooses not to have a transplant at all, then they will certainly have a compromised survival, which could vary from as little as a year to as much as three or four years.
Here's a question. So all three of you have certainly managed patients with allogeneic transplant. We did talk about a little bit about the prognosis, but how to handle side effects like graft versus host disease and extreme hyperpigmentation. So a patient who says that he or she has hyperpigmentation over arms, legs and face. Is there any help for this? I am so upset how ugly I look. I feel like a monster. Please help me. You can't even cover it with makeup.
I mean, I, we do a lot of allogeneic transplants and GVHD, particularly GVHD that is cosmetically disfiguring is devastating to a patient's quality of life. There are a number of newer drugs that have become available for graft versus host disease that help the skin, skin changes and so on. So unless they've been explored and they failed, I would say that there is a reasonable chance that you will benefit from appropriate treatment. And again, I would talk to the transplant physician who is managing you. And if the transplant center happens to be a, a small one, then seek out another place where you could take an opinion in terms of the drugs that can be used. Araxolantinib, the drug that we talked about several times for myelofibrosis, a new drug called Resuroc, some of the monoclonal antibodies like rituximab. There are a number of agents that have been utilized very successfully for, for GVHD, including the hyperpigmentation.
Oh, I, I would agree. I think again, the emphasis is for those that are having transplants to really focus on early treatment of chronic graft versus host disease so that you can prevent some of the longer term complications. But there are indeed new drugs that are very promising to treat and prevent this. We, up until a few years ago, had no treatments available for chronic graft versus host disease. And we've been doing transplants since nineteen seventy. And this year was the first year that we ever had a drug available now to treat acute graft versus host disease approved by the FDA. So again, focus on early therapy. If there's still redness in addition to the hyperpigmentation, that means you still have active disease and therapy should be initiated. Obviously there are complications associated with therapy, including issues related to getting a severe COVID infection. So you have to weigh the risks and the benefits and with, with any of these. And like, as we said before, second opinions are not inappropriate for very difficult disease conditions. We're coming up on finishing here. And so not to, not to be too much like a copycat. We're going to do more of a rapid question and answer here. So not to channel too much Kramer. Let's, let's go. And so anybody can answer these. Any approved new therapies for run X one in AML?
No.
Okay, I agree with that. There is nothing out there just yet. Doesn't mean that we're working on it. How long from a diagnosis of CLL before starting medication is usually the time for that?
Yeah, it's typically three to five years.
And what would be your indication to start somebody on therapy?
If they have changes in their blood counts where their hemoglobin or platelets drop, if the white count's accelerating very quickly, or if they don't feel well or the lymph nodes are growing, I would start treatment.
Life expectancy after MGOS is diagnosis and until treatment is needed for multiple myeloma.
Highly variable. I would say that the typical duration is at least a decade. And I've followed patients for more than twenty years without requiring therapy.
His son was diagnosed in September twenty twenty one with ET with polycythemia. He's, was treated with hydroxyurea right from the start, but this gave him awful chest discomfort.
That's an unusual side effect that I, unusual side effect. There are other medications that can be used. There's a medication called enagrelide. People, we talk about Jacka phi sometimes, we talk about interferon, as I mentioned earlier.
And yes, myelofibrosis is sometimes seen in this condition and myelofibrosis can be associated with bone pain. Again, I would agree, hydroxyurea is something that lowers the white count and platelet count. It doesn't really have any adverse effects on bones, but certainly there are rare complications from any drug. How to manage side effects of revlimid, especially GI problems?
Babel motility reducing agents, probiotics, cholesteramine, sometimes giving a break, sometimes giving the drug intermittently. Instead of giving it ten milligram, seven days a week, we often do twenty five milligram, two consecutive days a week and then five days off. That could work and give a trial of stopping the drug. If the side effects don't disappear, then you know it's not related to revlimid. If the side effects do disappear, then you can either restart the drug at a lower dose, a different schedule, or go to a different drug such as pomalidomide, especially if the side effect is diarrhea.
Evu shield. Are you using it? Which patients are, are getting this? And for those online, Evu shield is a monoclonal antibodies. That's now FDA approved as a preventative therapy for COVID infections.
So at our site, we have a tiered system. So Evu shield is still a little bit limited in terms of how much of it we have, but it can protect people against COVID for up to six months for people who can't have a normal immune response to the vaccine. And so in our tier, anybody who is on a B cell or a T cell, you know, depleting treatment, so rituximab, CAR T cell therapy, transplant, immune suppressants for other diseases are the first tier. And then second tier would be people who are in remission or not on active therapy that have a number of leukemias and lymphomas. And then third would be solid cancers. I think those tiers and who should get it are, is going to change if the drug becomes more available.
Are you accepting patients from other doctors or community practices?
Yeah, as of right now, because of the limitation, we are restricting it to our, our patients who are already established or who come to see us now as for a second opinion or a patient who is seen at the University of Chicago. But I hope that changes, you know, I hope it's a little bit more widely available soon. I don't know if other institutions are doing the same.
So we are not giving it to outside patients. But one interesting thing that we have at least chosen to do in our myeloma and the transplant practice is to monitor the spike protein antibody serially and regularly. And people who have had three doses of the vaccine and still do not have a spike protein antibody automatically have the highest priority to get the drug.
You're muted.
Oh, sorry, I, I, we're, we're, we take a similar approach. So in, in the, in the patients who've had B cell depleting or T cell depleting therapy, we're offering it, but like everywhere else, it's, 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 you know, very limited what we have. So that, that is, you know, that makes it a little bit tough.
I will make one controversial statement, and that is that if a patient does not want the vaccine and wants Evu shield, I, I would not allow that.
Quickie, how do I know if the leukemia is the cause of neuropathy in my feet?
A broad question because we don't know exactly what kind of leukemia. The disease, acute leukemias in and of themselves are unlikely to cause neuropathy. Some of the treatments we sometimes give can sometimes cause neuropathy, but the disease itself is unlikely to cause neuropathy.
And that's different than lymphomas. There are some lymphomas like Waldenstrom's that can cause neuropathy. And, but, but I agree, it's usually the treatment for these cancers that causes it.
Again, I think that if somebody is all the clear blue sky has started to have pain in the feet and legs and has especially an acute lymphoid leukemia, maybe with active disease, the possibility of meningial disease needs to be ruled out. And that, that includes doing a spinal tap to check for malignant cells. So for the acute leukemias, as was mentioned, that, that's something that I think would, would be done. I am on xanobrutinib. I'm getting hematomas. Is that acceptable?
It's unusual with xanobrutinib to have hematomas. In general, xanobrutinib and even a calabrutinib have been engineered to have less effects on platelet dysfunction. But I would say that if there's hematomas, that is worth getting evaluated and potentially changing to a different BTK inhibitor. But that is unusual. I would likely consider a different cause for that.
I agree, and things like taking naproxen or other non steroidals. Somebody who's on blood thinners, somebody who's on Plavix, who had a heart attack, et cetera. That's one of the potential advantages of xanobrutinib is that it doesn't have as much of a anticoagulant effect as a brutinib does. Let's see. Best treatment for relapse, eleven Q unmutated CLL with a history of AFib.
Well, I think that's a very good question. So atrial fibrillation, you know, if it's well controlled, may not be as important in the selection, but I will say that both xanobrutinib and a calabrutinib are less likely to aggravate the atrial fibrillation, again, because they've been engineered that way. For the unmutated phenotype, we know that chemotherapy doesn't work. And to be honest, we don't use chemotherapy in the relapse setting anyway anymore. So for that person, I would go to either, you know, a calabrutinib or xanobrutinib or to, you know, depending on where they are, to venetoclax based therapy or even a CAR T.
Last question is about diet. And something that always comes up, we talked about risk factors at the beginning. We'll end with, do you have any specific diet recommendations that you give your patients with leukemia and lymphoma? Jash, start with you.
I, I, I think data of diet affecting treatment beneficially directly are scarce and in fact, close to zero. But a healthier diet will obviously contribute to overall health being good. And better overall health will help you to battle the disease better. So I think a healthy diet, a balanced diet is always, always, always going to be useful.
Any specific nutritional supplements?
We don't recommend anything other than ensuring that the vitamin D status is depleted. B twelve folate supplementation, if neuropathy is, is a problem. And of course, multivitamin supplementation in people who are unable to take things appropriately and orally. But as to long list of nutritional supplements that patients often like, I have no evidence to show that those help.
Ollie, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Can, can you answer a question? Do you have any specific diet recommendations for your patients or nutritional supplements?
I generally recommend just a multivitamin and trying to get most of your vitamins from your diet. So a colorful diet with greens, oranges and reds is going to be the best way to get all the supplements. You know, vitamin D is something that's being explored in lymphomas, but otherwise there's no specific diet or supplements. Sorry, I was answering the, the question in the chat. So.
Yeah. So just, I, I, I agree. I think that a well-rounded, well-balanced diet is good. Sometimes when a patient is neutropenic with leukemia, we recommend they stay away from raw meat sushi and things like that. But, but in general, as a disease fighting approach, just a well-rounded, well-balanced diet is, is the best thing to do.
Stay away from the falafel guy on First Avenue there.
The dirty water dogs, the dirty water dogs. That probably does actually.
All right. Well, a little levity there. Thank, thank you to the physicians here for giving up your time this afternoon and your very erudite responses to some of these very difficult questions. Thank you all.